All rise. Here ye, hear ye, hear ye, this honorable commissioners meeting of Roan County, Tennessee, is now in session. The Honorable Randy Ellis Chairman presiding. God bless these United States, the great state of Tennessee, and this honorable meeting. At this time, our Commissioner David Bell will lead us in prayer. Afterwards, please remain standing to the pledge of American flag.
All right, let's pray. Dear heaven and father, coming for you tonight, just thanking you for the opportunity just to wake up this morning. Lord, did I, I was able just to be up and to see your goodness as the sun rose.
Yeah.
Lord, I just come to you humbly, asking personally that the 25 souls that I've seen saved this week would be nourished by the church. Amen. I ask you that, that the church also rise up here. I ask you that the leaders in the church rise up. That's the only thing, Lord, that's going to help our communities and our country.
Yeah.
I ask that, that the leaders in the community, the leaders right here pray before decisions, so it will be a godly decision, Lord. And I thank you for, for all these guys. I thank you for the opportunity to be here and stand in the gap. And I ask that you put it on our hearts, that that weighs heavy, that the decisions we make impacts lives for the better or for the worse, Lord. Lord, I thank you for your son who died for us.
Yeah.
An opportunity for, for salvation, for most of all forgiveness.
Yes.
Lord, it's just so awesome that you think that much of us. Lord, I ask that you be with these leaders at the highest level, down to the lowest level, just put a burden in their heart to do the next right thing, Lord. Lord, thank you again for the breath of air that you allowed us to breathe this morning. It's in your son's Jesus name we ask you, thank you for these things. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. If you have a cell phone, please turn it down.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I'd like to thank everybody for their prayers and their gifts, cards and everything during the loss of my mother. It means a whole lot to me.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I still remember Commissioner Moore in our prayers. Most of us realize how hard it is to lose a mother and a parent, so especially remember Mr. Moore in your prayers. Right quick, before we get started, I will, we always try to make it customary to recognize elected officials that's here visiting today. We've got Mr. State Representative Kent Calfey, State Senator Ken Jaeger, they'll be coming up in a second. We've got Bobby Anderson, he is a city councilman from the city of Rockwood. Thank you all for coming. I don't think I've missed anyone. Without objection, if it's all right with the commission, I want to go ahead and move a few things to the front before we even get started. I want to go ahead and recognize State Representative Kent Calfey and State Senator Ken Jaeger.
Okay.
Right quick, let the record reflect, we have 14 present commissioners for our roll call, we have one absent as of the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the best things about this job is recognizing individuals or groups for their accomplishments. And we have two tonight. The first one, we're going to talk about is the, is Roan County Rescue Squad on their 60th anniversary. We've been trying to get this done for a few months, and there's always some issue. And I'd like to give a little personal note, back in the day when we had a very active community club at the Cave Creek, when all the stuff come, started coming in out of the garden and all the old saints, most of them are gone now, the old ladies that my mother and a lot of them, that fixed an unbelievable meal. And they'd come up and show us the latest rescue equipment they had. And as the saying is, a good time is had by all, and I sure do miss those days, it's been a long time. And I'm not going to read the whole thing. This is from myself, Senator Jaeger, and Representative Travis. And just briefly, it's upon occasion, the 60th anniversary, whereas it is fitting that we should salute the men and women of rescue squads who in the course of discharge and their vital public duties, provide services that dramatically improve communities and outcomes for individuals seriously injured or in peril. Whereas one such group is the Roan County Rescue Squad, which has a staff of the highest quality, skilled and dedicated, and celebrating its 60th anniversary. A public service this year, and where it's founded in 1959, the Roan County Rescue Squad has since grown to become one of the very best rescue squads in the state of Tennessee. And Ken, if you'd like to read something, just quit when you take it up, and we'll give a talking motion.
I'll bring it to a conclusion. Where the members of the Roan County Rescue Squad are truly dedicated to the health and well-being of their fellow Tennesseans for their prodigious efforts on behalf of the people of this state should be recognized. And then the language continues, it resolved by the House of Representatives of the 111th General Assembly with the concurrence of Senator Jaeger and others that we do hereby extend our best wishes on the celebration of their 60th anniversary. Let me add that in years past, I had the privilege to serve on the board for the rescue squad, and that was certainly one of the most pleasant experiences that I had because I got to witness firsthand the work that these men and women do to save lives. And the preparation that they make, they are really very dedicated to their job, and this is the least we could do to recognize that service.
You all, Mr. Moore, Representative, Representative, and Senators, right up here in front of the podium. Right up here, circle around here.
And like I said, it's always a great thing to honor a group that's accomplished so much, so with that, I'm going to turn that over to whoever wants it, and as they say, it's suitable for framing.
Would you like to say anything?
Yeah, but just from all of us that have been in the rescue squad for quite a few years, J.T. Robinson right here is one of the founding members from 1959. And, now you get, here, I'll share it with you. There we go. And all the captains and all the members in the past, and our board of directors, which there's three of them sitting in here tonight, and a past board member in here, so thank to everybody that supports us and hope to see another 60 years.
Any commissioners like that?
I just think it's fitting that we pass by your garage every day, thousands of times over the period of years. We don't think much about it until we read what you've done in the paper, whether it's on the water, in the woods, in a cave, wherever. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, councilman.
Thank you. Hi, J.T.
Thanks, Senator Jaeger. Representative Calfey has one more.
Now, this one, this one's probably not popular as that one was. This is recognizing Ron Berry upon his election to the Board of Directors of the National Association of Counties. And whereas it is a pleasure of the members of General Assembly to recognize civic leaders who continue their communities with their, to their communities and improve Tennessee and move it forward, whereas such Tennessean is Ron Berry, who was recently elected to serve on the Board of Directors of the National Association of Counties, NACO.
And let me say that having served in some of these associations when I was in county government, I'm aware how important these particular leadership positions are, particularly the one that Mr. Berry was elected to. It is certainly a recognition of his ability and their confidence in him. And I'm glad to join Representative Calfey on this resolution commending him for this achievement.
And this is signed by Ron Travis, Representative Ron Travis, Representative Calfey, Senator Jaeger, Governor Bill Lee, Speaker of the Senate Randy McNally, and Speaker of the House, Gennette. So.
Mr. Berry.
Is that legal, Mr. Captain? Is that legal, Gennette?
He was, he was the man, Lee. There we go. Got it?
Good to see you in the paper now.
Mr. Berry, would you like to say anything?
Of course he would.
I appreciate, I appreciate this very much. I appreciate serving Roan County as well as all the other 94 counties in the state on NACO board, and NACO is a great organization that serves us really well, and thank you guys, appreciate you very much.
Also, a quick reminder, Senator Jaeger threatened bodily harm if I didn't mention his chili supper, or his Friday night from 5:00 to 7:00 at Roan State, it benefited the Roan County United Way. So he said he hopes to see everyone there. If you hadn't had tickets yet, he'd be happy to sell you some. Also, without objection, I would like to go ahead and move a special order presentation of Resolution 1119 S01 honoring the Kingston High School golf team. Do I have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Bell, second by Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Bell.
I believe David Boshers is the one that put this res- resolution.
Sorry about that. If you want me to flip it back and let him get the motion. Go ahead, get the motion, and you get second.
Okay, you want me to?
Go right ahead.
Well, I, yeah, I make the motion.
Go ahead.
Make the motion to honor the golf team, go back to turn right here. And that's a big thing, I mean, at least second place even in the state with that many kids playing, or young people. That's not, they're not kids anymore, they're young, they're young men. They've done an excellent job, and they've had two excellent coaches, I know both of them.
Mr. Wilson.
No, I concur with it. I'm very proud of your accomplishment. It's something you can raise your head high about, and Roan County is proud, proud of you, Kingston's proud of you, and I just appreciate you, you've done a good job, guys.
Mr. Bell.
So, Jack.
As anyone knows, golf's not an easy sport, so that's a big accomplishment for you all. So I've got a motion by Commissioner Boshers, second by Commissioner Wilson. Do this on a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carried. If you all would come up, guys.
It ain't no game for you.
I have, Commissioner Bell, go ahead and read the resolution for you all while I'm there.
Resolution honoring the Kingston Golf Team, I'm not going to say high school every time, for their winning performance. Whereas the Kingston Golf Team excelled in postseason play, and whereas the Kingston Golf Team finished runners-up in the TWSAA Division One Golf Tournament, whereas the Kingston Golf Team players are commended for their efforts and their dedication to the game, whereas Mike, Coach Mike Spanky Neal, and Assistant Coach Landon Harden are being commended for their leadership and their dedication to the team, whereas it's altogether fitting and proper that the Kingston Golf Team be honored for their performance in the regular season and postseason play. Now thereof, it be resolved that the Roan County Commission does hereby honor the Kingston Golf Team for their winning performance. Be their resolve that the copy of the resolution be presented to the coaches, Spanky Neal and Landon Harden, and players Jesse Griffin, Blake Woody, Colby Johnson, Ben Mullis, Logan Carter, Malcolm Sherbine, Caleb Tejeda, and Brayden Reynolds.
Coach, would you like, either of y'all like to say something?
I just want to say we appreciate y'all having us. We tried to represent Kingston and the county as good as we could. These kids were a pleasure to coach. I look forward to coaching them again next year. I look forward to the seniors succeeding in what they choose to go on to do, and just, I can't say enough about these nine, nine boys that I coached this year. It was, it was something special.
Yeah, this isn't the first time Kingston's been in the spotlight with, with at least one of the coaches. And I've personally been to the state twice with two different teams and watched us win twice, so that was when I was in high school, was far enough back.
20 years ago.
Yeah. He did say he went to watch, though, you didn't play, right?
No. They were happy to swing and go play.
No, he brought back a servant here, though.
That's right.
They had a desperate gruff out of them.
No.
Hey, like, thank everybody for having us tonight. Special group of kids representing our city and county well. You know, we won 41, 41 and 3 records, pretty good season, and we played the foundation, and we're looking to do better next year, so this group's been great, and look forward to the future of our program.
Very good. Guys, if y'all like to say anything, now's your opportunity.
Get jackets.
They said as much as they wanted the civics last, and asked if they could get out of here as quick as they could. But thank you guys again. Commissioner Boshers will get you all the resolutions.
All right, thank you.
So we are going to do a resolution. Yes, yes. Awesome, Travis. Just make an official, Resolution 1119 S01 was adopted unanimously. Right quick, one more, and two more announcements, we'll recognize Mr. Carter Bowley. If you could stand up, Carter, for me. He is here as Representative of Roan County Youth Leadership, 2019. Okay, we'll move back on to our regular agenda, a couple of minutes till October 17, 2019. Motion by Commissioner Hickman, second by Commissioner White. Commissioner Hickman.
Nothing.
Commissioner White.
Nothing bad, sir.
Any other questions or comments? We'll try to do this on a voice vote, so we can just, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, like sign. Amendments have been approved, October 17, 2019. Sentence, Committee of Force Correspondents, commission, motion by Commissioner Berry, second by Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Berry.
I have nothing.
Yes.
You sure, Mr. Berry? Okay. Commissioner Moore, go right ahead.
We need to give him another plaque. Give you a resolution every meeting.
I want to.
We're on a roll here.
This has been a feel-good meeting so far.
Any other questions or comments on approval of Committee of Force Correspondents? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, like sign. Sentence, Committee of Force Correspondents approve. Movement to the notaries, Madam Clerk.
Elizabeth H. Bolden, Pamela Long Byers, John Choak, Brenda G. Cordell, Skylar Davis, Jared Rick Houston, Renisha G. Maples, Cassandra Miles, Candace Monroe, Ellen Russell, Chelsea Scarborough, and Brenda Lee Young.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Bell. I think he hit that amendment on accident. Commissioner Henderson.
Mr. President, sir.
Mr. Bell.
Amen.
Any other questions or comments on the notaries? We'll have to do a roll call, since we're technically, by T.C., elected these notaries, so if you could vote, please.
Vote.
This communication system got me whipped today.
The notaries have been approved by 14 to nothing. At this point, it comes to the hearing of elections. This is an opportunity that's been set aside on our agenda for the public to address the county commission. We asked if you're here in a group to try to address your concerns to the spokesman, and keep your minute, comments to three minutes or less, and this will be your only time to speak unless the commissioner yields to you later in the meeting. If you could step forward, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Tony Byer, live at Bonin's Den off of Watts Barley. I almost hate to get into this, but I feel the need. It goes back to the last meeting, which is, if you all know, is a pretty much a marathon meeting. And I wish Commissioner Gann was here, because he was the one that inspired me. He got up and spoke about the school votes that were had some time ago for the Oliver Springs and Midway. And I went back and checked, because I thought it was some time ago, but it was in the October 16th of 18 paper that this board, this commission, votes to approve the plans for Midway and Oliver Springs. That was October a year ago, 13 months now. Then in November, now just a year ago, it came back and the funds were approved. $7.1 million were approved for those two, two projects, and which means our taxes went up. Now come, well, I don't know exactly the meeting, it was either June or July, when the budget meeting happened, there was another tax increase, but then, I remember it was a penny for firefighters, it was two or three cents for this, and two or three cents for that, was it six or seven cents? And part of that was kind of in, for something to come. Here's what I understand, this commission voted to start the two projects 12 to 2. They voted the funding 13 to 1. And then the tax increase that came in June or July, with the funding from back last November, and the one in June and July, it would actually fund the new value of 10. whatever million dollars. But that didn't get approved last month. Now, at the taxpayer on standing here, we approved two tax increases, and we're not getting anything for it. I mean, it was explicitly voted, I understand 7.1 wasn't enough, but now we're doing nothing, even though we got a tax increase, and I'm just, as taxpayer, somewhat confused by this commission couldn't get together and pass that last night. I guess it's not even on the agenda this week. So anyway, I just want to get my two cents out, because that's our guy.
Thank you, Mr. Byer. He's fresh off his Garth Brooks tour, so he had, he had a good concert last night. The county executive, objections, has to address.
Mr. Byer, just a big clear clarification, when they approved the funding in November or December, whenever it was, the tax increase last fall, you only do a tax increase if you're changing the tax rate once a year. So they approved the project, I mean, you're right on everything, except there wasn't a, there wasn't two tax increases, there was just one.
For the total?
It was for the total, that's correct. But there was, there was one tax increase, and it was for debt service. There was a penny that went to the volunteer fire department, the other went to the debt service for that, that project.
The 10 cent.
10. Anyone else like to address the commission? Anyone else like to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move along to the county attorney's report. And I've already tried to get out of him, do his taileries, and he won't tell me again today, so, Mr.?
I'm going to wear overalls.
Mr. Chairman, the only, my report deals only with the letter we got from the Attorney General last month on the opioid suit, and there is a resolution at the end of the agenda pertaining to that, so do you wish for me to wait until that resolution comes up?
Is that the way of the commission, we'll just wait until it comes up? That'll work. We'll move on to the county executive's report, and as you can see how quickly we're moving, Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things I have. First of all, Connie has passed out a financial report for the end of month. We can take a look at that if you want to, right quick. It's good if they're looking at that, if you're taking it home, or get your budget out, look at those together. I'm just going to get a few highlight numbers, just so you can see kind of where we're at. So the first page, the first line is property tax. So this is the way we, we roll. It is, it is November, we are five months into the fiscal year, and you can see we have collected little less than 8% property tax.
Okay.
So that said, that's the reason we have fund balances, to cash flow our operations, because the biggest revenue source in the general fund, it's 8.5 million, is property tax. We will get the bulk of that in December and in February. So each, each fund has a different fund balance, because each fund cash flows differently. So part of our fund balances for cash flow. So it just shows the budget estimate, actual collected, the percentage, and then the balance to collect. So the first two pages deal with revenue. At the bottom of the second page, the budget committee will look at that last number, because this is going to change probably substantial for us. Contract prisoner board, last year we received over $800,000. The previous year was under eight, we had budgeted 800,000. We've received two, a quarter of a million dollars so far. We estimated it 555, but that number we are sure will be a whole lot less than 800,000. People, we have folks in the Sheriff's Department, but most of the TDOC inmates, a lot of them have exited our jail already. That's where we collect this money, the rest of our schedule will probably go out in the next 30 days or so. So this number will be substantially reduced. The next page, you'll see the revenues end up at the top third of the page, and you begin with the expenditures. Just to draw your attention on the general fund on the, on the next page, you have an account number 54210, jail. You'll see that, and you'll see that the jail budget is 3.8 million dollars almost. That number's not going to change a whole lot, because we still have to have the same employees over there. So your expenditures will not change or drop a whole lot, just because our TDOC inmates are out. We anticipate that number also going up, because it appears that we will have to start contracting out for our locals. But there's been a committee that met today with the DA, the public defender, Commissioner Hestra, I think, attended that. They're trying to do what they can to get the numbers down. I guess when we had our work session, it was about 320, we're down to 280 something now, so that number is continuing to, to change. Those pages conclude the general fund, there's a lot of details in there, and then each fund is about a page itself. 116 solid waste of the page, then you have the Amos Department, 118, 121, special purpose, our drug fund, 122, 128, and then you got 131, the highway fund, that is our next general fund. You have a general fund, the general highway fund. The following page is the general purpose school fund. And, you know, as you go through these, you'll find that if you compare revenues with expenditures, we budgeted a whole lot more expenses than revenue, and that's because we anticipate a lot of the expenditure budgets, you know, we ask people to be very frugal and not spend their money, so we do a calculation on that. The general, the general purpose school fund's different than that, the way they have to adopt theirs. Their budget is basically balanced, short a half a million dollars if they're going to transfer. But on the revenue side, and these are the little, you know, synchronicities about our budgets, they have an account 44570. These pages, or at least the pages 11 and 30 on the top right-hand side, 11 and 30. You see the account 44570? Y'all see that?
Yep.
Yes.
$1.8 million, that's a faint number. Where we budget out of balance, they have to budget revenue to do the same calculations we do. So that gives in contribution, I don't expect we're going to have a benefactor out there that's going to give us one. I don't expect we're going to have a benefactor out there that's going to give us one point eight million dollars. Okay? So these budgets have been worked this way for decades and decades, but if you're not in them day in and day out, you know, you don't understand all this. If you have any questions on any of these, please call Connie. Anybody have a question? The financials?
Mr. Moore?
I have one question there.
Page number?
Verse two, actually, forty-one-ten and forty-one-twenty. Was that, I was just going to ask, and I got the written down. So at this point in time, last year, we collected forty-five percent. That's owed to, is that what that means? You got the current property tax, very, very important, yes?
The current property tax is seven point eight-eight. That's about where we were this time last year.
So, but for collections prior year, that's forty-five point oh-three, what does that mean?
That is last year's taxes that people are paying late that we're collecting this year. So they're paying, so because of that, you also have interest and penalties being accumulated down there.
Okay. I just wondered if that's where we're.
That's, that's the last year's levy where people are paying late.
Okay.
So that doesn't have anything to do with actual money that the trustees collected?
That is the actual money the trustees collected.
But I mean, from all departments, that's just taxes? That's just about that they haven't paid from last year?
That is in the general fund. Every fund, so the way that, the way taxes are levied when we pass our tax regulations is, it is a levy by fund. So when the money comes in, you pay a hundred dollars taxes, it gets to buy them on all funds. And then if you don't pay this year, it becomes a prior year, and it gets levy by the tax rate on the prior years.
And on the, on our prisoner board, as you mentioned there, that, so you can't, you can't really take the same percent that, that we're going to be taking out of revenues and apply that to expenditures. There's a lot of fixed costs in the expenditures.
Yeah. So, so you lose twenty inmates on a given day, thirty inmates on a given day, you still have to stack the control run with that one person? There's one person in control of one run? There's generally one person that's rolling the pods, and that's, if there's three, I don't know, is it about three people in there, giving time on the upper part? You take twenty people out of there, you still have to have three people. You take eighty people out of there, you still have to have three people. You take a hundred people out of there, you still have to have three people.
So what are we finding cost-wise from, from surrounding areas that we're sending inmates to on a cost-per-day basis?
I don't, have we, we have talked about sixty dollars. That was when we were talking with Bob Bass, and he let, letting us know that there's facilities in Memphis and Hayward County. Chief Phillips is back there, Chief Hahn.
The, the, we've got a contact with Hayward County. They'll take the female TDOC prisoners. I'm still working with them, trying to get some details worked out. Ray County was sending a lot of their people to Anderson County, but Anderson County told Ray County to come get all their people. I called and talked to the chief up there and see what they can do to help us out. And right now, they, they've got an issue of their own, so that's probably not going to be a solution for us. So we're just trying to, we have meetings a day, just trying to see where we're at once we get rid of the TDOC people and, and I guess contact these other places that have beds and just see who's the best price. And, you know, logistically, it's going to be a nightmare, but.
Will you get any prices, Chief?
Not, not yet, because we're still, we worked through a list of inmates today just to try to see who we're going to get out. I want to start housing the folks if we can get them out, or they're talking about doing pretrial sentencing stuff with them. And they've also kicked around, maybe utilizing the bracelets. So they're trying to get all that done before we get to the point where we're actually following them out. And when it gets to that point, you know, we'll, we'll go with the best price, I guess.
And I guess the other question is, Ray County sends them to Anderson County, but they're still Ray County prisoners. Anderson County can say, "Come and get them at any time." Is that right?
Anytime. And, you know, from what, the way that I understand it, they had at one time an agreement. If they said, "Okay, we're going to keep twenty beds for you," you know, while you're talking to the people to and from court, to and from doctor's appointments, you're paying for twenty beds regardless whether they're not. So that's, that's the thing that whoever is in the negotiation part of, of, "Okay, we're going to do a ninety-day contract, a hundred-and-twenty-day contract." They're going to give you a set price, but whatever that set price is, from the way that I understand it, it's going to be just twenty people that you've worked out. If you've got eighteen there, you're still going to get charged for twenty.
Chief, how many, how many state folks do we have?
And that number fluctuates, and this is kind of, it's a good question. Today, criminal court's going on right now. They got nine people out, and now we've got nine warrants for nine violations. So you're, you're swapping people. So you get nine, that, you get nine more back. We sent eight to prison this morning, and we got more, more to come this week.
So if we're trying to get rid of state inmates, how do we get the state not to, not for us to take new ones? I mean, it looks like we're fighting a battle that if the state is going to fine us or make us do facility. We've told them now, we've got a plan, we're going to get rid of ours. Well, how can they continue to send us?
Well, they're, they're not sending them to us. You know, the thing is, is how they become a state inmate is when they come through our criminal justices, they're incarcerated, in our jail, they're pretrial. Once they come here, they enter into a plea or they're found guilty, the courts, the judge sentences them, and if it's a sentence that requires prison time, that's when they become a Tennessee Department of Corrections inmate. And at that time, what we do, and I called, Mr. Crease from the Department of Corrections, he's the guy that we, we called, and he said, "Hey, this is what I got." We sent them, last week, I sent them thirty-three names of people that could go to prison. And so far, we've gotten rid of about fifteen of those. Now, there's more people that are TDOC, but they're on a split confinement. So what they do, they come to court, and it's a technical violation, it's, "Okay, you're going to spend a hundred-and-twenty days." You're still a TDOC inmate. The prison's not going to take them. They're going to do their time over here, and they may do ninety days, they may do a hundred-and-twenty days. But when you have those split confinements, for anything more than two years, the prison, or under two years, the prison's not going to take them.
How many of those do you estimate that we would have at any time?
Fifteen.
So counsel, is, is there some way that, that we can pass a resolution or something asking the state the situation that we're given? They're paying us thirty-nine dollars a day. We're paying sixty dollars a day to take these folks somewhere else. If they're not going to take all of ours, is there some way we can't, we can't get the state to pay the difference in what we're having to pay? If we're trying to find a place for them, and there's no place?
I, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
We, we had Senator Yager and Kathy here a while ago. We let them off.
Well, I couldn't, I wouldn't, they weren't in, they weren't available. But is, is that something that's, that's feasible for us to look at if, if we're having trouble finding a place for those people?
Well, we can look at it, but, you know, I don't know what the answer is. It's my understanding that the problem is, if they're sentenced, it's under two years, the state's not going to take them, so they have to serve their time locally. And when they're serving their time locally, we're getting paid for them. Is that correct?
Thirty-nine dollars.
And then it's costing us to send them somewhere else.
Right. But it hasn't given, that's, that's, it's going to soon. And those prices haven't been talked about.
So what you want me to look at then would be, is are we locked into that thirty-nine dollar figure, or?
I think we're locked into the thirty-nine dollar figure.
Is there some mechanism in the law where it could be?
Yeah, they're telling us we have to build a new jail. Those, those twenty or thirty people that are there for splits or whatever are going to be there. So, so they're counting against us. I think we finally established that, that those inmates don't count against our total now, or they do count against, they do count against our total now, we found out actually.
If they're in that jail, they count.
Okay. So, so basically, we're being, we're being penalized for thirty, say thirty people that we're trying to get out. We're going to have to pay sixty dollars a day, but they're giving us thirty times. Looks like they would be responsible for, for that difference if they don't have jail capacity.
All right, I'll see what.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And I know Mr. Berry can contest to this. We've been here about going on nine or ten years, and that's the topic of every association meeting we go to, is that thirty-nine dollars a day for that? Mr. Meadows?
Thank you, Chairman Ellis. And Mr. Phillips got a couple of questions that I believe you can answer. How many TDOC prisoners have been transferred out so far? I know we've had others being, how many have we gotten rid of?
Well, it, it's, it's, that number changes every day. There may be some, there may be two getting released right now, so that's a never-changing number. From a split confinement, we release them from over here, but that has actually been taken to prison. Eight went this morning. I've got seven females, and I'm trying to get to Hayward County. They've got six more openings. It's just, it's actually took off pretty quick considering we're not the only jail in Tennessee that's got this issue, and, you know, everybody's kind of under the same, you know, ordeal. So when you call these people, you're looking at ninety-five counties funneling all their TDOC people into the prison system, which, you know, is, is kind of like learning cats, I guess you could say.
But I, okay, and I guess if I'm hearing you correctly, we can say we're going to get rid of all TDOC for as much as we can, but then they're going to come on back in.
It's a never-ending cycle.
I mean, we can't stop.
That's right.
Because of the sentencing.
Even when we're not in session, here in the criminal court circuit, we take our inmates to Loudon County, to Macks County, to Morgan County, if there's an issue where the judge needs to see them, or they've worked out a deal, or whatever, or for sentencing. So it's, it's twenty-four-seven.
When, when they're moving back to TDOC out of here, who, who moves them? Who pays for transportation?
We do.
And do we provide the transportation? Do we pay for transportation?
Yeah, we've, we've got staff that takes them wherever they're going. And luckily here lately, we've just been taking them to Bloods.
But they're state prisoners. Is there any reimbursement to us for any of those costs?
Now, the only thing that we've ever, and we've, we've never really seen it, because it's not really happened that much, whenever Tennessee Department of Correction inmates incarcerated, and they get ill, they have to be hospitalized for more than twenty-four hours before we can even reimburse any kind of fund. When they're, when they're ours, they're ours, and whatever issues they, they come with, they're ours.
And one more last quick question. I know there's been some, some discussion regarding the census or the head counts. Do the TDOC people, inmates, count against us?
I have the impression that they're incarcerated over there, they're there.
Right. But then. And they're counted, they're, when they.
That Mr. Bass said last time he was here.
But when you're looking.
We've heard it both ways.
When you're looking at the two entities, TDOC and TCI, even though they're state entities, they are two different animals.
And then you have a fire marshal as well.
And another one, yes.
You know, and I think they have three counts a little bit different, don't they? Or do they?
No, they don't.
You get, you get, you get three accountants together, we're all counting.
So here, here's the other thing that I want you to be aware of. There's twenty-two people that are temporarily leased, and what that means is the feds have them, and they're coming back because they're ours. They're in middle health hospital, they're coming back because they're ours. They're in Anderson County because they got court, they're there on a transport order, they're ours. So you got twenty-two people that is not counting that two-hundred-and-eighty-something from earlier that can come back any day.
And we don't control that?
No, we don't.
They show up.
The, the feds will regulate, say, "Hey, we're done." Or Anderson County council, "Hey, this is ready to be picked up. Box of bids says, hey, we got this person here." So there's, there's a lot of moving parts to this world.
Thank you.
Well, thank Chief Hahn and Chief Phillips for being here this evening. Thank you all. I had Commissioner, right quick, Commissioner Hendricks, did you not want to speak?
No.
Okay. Then I had Commissioner Hook. Did you not want to? Go ahead, Mr. Hook.
Director of General Counsel. Chief Phillips. We moved the females out to Hayward County.
That's, that's what we're going to try to do for the Tennessee Department of Corrections ones. They won't take any of the others.
Don't take it. But once they're moved out to Hayward County, we lose the thirty-nine dollars a day. It goes to Hayward County.
It does.
But we're not paying, we're not paying the additional.
Not for them, not for the state inmates.
Not for the state inmates. Okay.
There's some, there's some jails that have vacancies, and it's, "Hey, we'll take a state inmate." They've got to be Sunday school quality, zero health issues, and that's hard to come by.
Right. I just, I just want to make that point clear. They are a distinction, distinction between them, you know, in on the street.
Mr. Hester?
So Chief Phillips, today we had a meeting, probably the first time, well, I mean, I invited myself to it, but the first time ever, I guess, the public defender, district attorney, yourself, and members of your organization went row by row, name by name, on the prisoners and identified pathways forward.
We, we had a real productive meeting today, probably one of the best ones we've had.
Yeah, I, I was happy to see it, seeing everyone work to try to lower that overall number. And I think it was very productive, and I think we're going to have that meeting again in two weeks, right?
I think we're going to try to meet on or before December the second.
So what is our deadline that the state gave for us to have our numbers down?
December fourth.
December fourth.
Yeah, December fourth, so we'll be in Nashville for our, the TCI, and this is just me talking, I don't, I don't know that, since we've made a real big effort to do what's been done, I think we're going to begin with TCI, and they're going to, we're probably going to be allowed to keep our certification. However, with the fire marshal, the way that the meeting that the mayor and a few of us were in last week, we've got to show them measurable progress where we have reduced the amount of inmates that's over there, you know, just for safety of the facility, you know, so that when you're, in the event you have a fire or whatever emergency, you're able to get people out safely. Yes, so let me, let me jump in here just a minute, and I appreciate if I take my time since you all said speaking, said leaving, but let me jump back in here just a minute and, Chief. So on Wednesday, November the thirteenth, this was, I guess, after our Thursday meeting, this was after, we met with the fire marshal. We met with their counsel, their attorney, their code enforcement, and their policy individual. So we met with them, the sheriff, Chief Phillips, myself, who else was with us there. Randy, Commissioner Ellis, we met with the fire marshal about a path forward. At the time, we were looking at a, a population of about three-twenty. They had no magic number, what we had to get down to, but they talked about the low two-hundreds. So it appeared to us that we needed to get rid of almost a, probably eighty to a hundred. We knew that at that time, there were about fifty or sixty TDOC, but of those, we knew we wouldn't get rid of all of those. So they told us we needed to start looking to contract out to ship some of our inmate out. We recognized that Loudon is building, Macks has no space, Morgan is building, Anderson is still building, Blount County's built, yeah, there's going to be some available space, but it looks like most of it's in west and middle Tennessee. So that, that said, working with Bob Bass, we have drafted a letter that will probably be signed tomorrow by the sheriff and myself. It's a two-page letter going to the state fire marshal. The state fire marshal, in it, we talk about this judicial committee that met today. We talked about having a top to, bottom to top review of probation service and to have some recommendation to maybe enhance it or change it. The ad hoc committee that Meadows, Commissioner Meadows chairs the other evening looked at a pretrial diversion department to be set up potentially, and that being discussed. All of that is outlined in the letter. It's outlined in that along with the resolution that you all passed last May that dealt with this million dollars to borrow it to get our site ready. So the TCI then forwarded us a letter, I may have got it yesterday, today sometime. It's about six pages that is kind of reiterates what we have sent to them and told them the whole time for a plan of action to them. TDOC, TCI, I'm sorry, TCI, Bob Bass, TCI. They indicate that if we stay on a plan of action and they see effort being made, their regulation says that we will continue our certification. That does not mean that the fire marshal will. But we do think that if they can see a substantial reduction in our. a substantial reduction in our inmates, that they will be okay with that, and they see measurable progress is what everybody talks about. Are we seeing measurable progress? So, we feel very optimistic by, by this committee meeting, by us exploring the probation. The probation will be studied by both TCI and UT. Uh, it will not be something that we are studying, and, and as we've talked before, if probation changes and it comes in-house, it falls under the executive branch, the judicial branch, and the law enforcement branch, they cannot, uh, govern that. The same thing with the pre-trial diversion. It will not rest there, probably rest in, in my office. So, that's one reason I've never been excited about bringing those in-house, quite frankly. But we have a, 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 a plan of action in place, uh, and it will cost us money, we know. By the loss of revenue from TDOC and by the, the inmates, it appears that there's no way out of us contracting out. Outside of like the, uh, we said the other day, we got three options. You build more beds, you contract out, or you let them out. Now, letting, letting them out, so to speak, comes into a, a number of programs that may be acceptable. So, uh, that is kind of where we're at on that. Any more questions about that, that particular part of the jail? Because we, we have a letter drafted, and, you know, once we sign it, and we've worked with Bob Bass, and we've edited going back and forth, and it's really, I said, you know, we passed a resolution a, a week or so ago of that million dollars. It's on the agenda again tonight to reaffirm that passage, uh, just because of ensuring that we have adequate notice. Uh, I said, we won't do anything until, you know, the Monday night, November the 18th meeting. And then if that goes, we'll send your letter and we'll start the process again.
I had Commissioner Hester. We're at, we're, we're still under the financial portion of your report, so we need.
Well, and all this is kind of financially, I guess.
I had Commissioner Berry.
All right, that's fine.
Commissioner Moore.
Just a observation. This is a statewide problem, obviously. Nationwide, if you watch TV and they're doing, I mentioned something to somebody the other day. I said, you used to, you'd hear a lot more about the rehab and things like that, and I'm sure there's probably a lot going on. But with the state, as a state, and it looked to me like, I know there's no such thing as free money, some about, we all pay it, but it looked like with everybody, the counties being in the same situation just about everywhere, and ACO and all that could probably have, it looked to me like we could apply for grants and things because of this opioid epidemic where we can show that, you know, and a couple million dollars here or something like that instead of us carrying the whole bill. I don't know if there's anything out there, but I remember we got a gaggle of good representatives.
Well, you know, that's a good question, and that's the reason we've got a million dollars worth of drug grants out there. You know, but the, but the million dollars with the drug, drug grants is, is, you know, it's dealing with recidivism. It's more as the initial incarceration and the punishment. Uh, so it's a long process, and we have a number of grants out there and apply for a number of grants. You know, I plugged the newspaper, I wrote articles in Friday's paper, hope you all had a chance to read it, and it basically says that county government, we're a political subdivision of the state. So, we are conducting activities that have been, uh, legislated that we conduct. You know, used to, uh, every city had a jail, but since they didn't have to, they all came to us. And, and now you have the state with this inmate population crisis that they're just pushing it down to us. And so, it's, it's a, it's a matter that we need to take up with our legislators. There's no question we have it, everybody else has it, haven't it too?
I just thought we might have asked that question somewhere, right setting somewhere, so look, you know, y'all are telling us we got to do this, and, you know, you're mandating it, but it's mandate without funding, you know?
I, I'm not so sure the state really recognizes the problem we have, that you're giving us $39. Your people's taking our beds, and we have to pay maybe $60 to $100 to send ours out. Or we may even send ours out the other day, but, uh, it's, I, it's.
It was just a thought, I mean.
It's complicated.
Been asked or whatever, but, so.
I think the legislative committee could have their hands full starting about January.
They probably could now.
Mr. Berry, have a quick question.
I had, and that's what I, that's what I had written out. As I understand it, there's a million dollar grant, a mental health grant that, that, that only Morgan County is even showing any interest in.
Well, we.
And that's, that closes the 26th.
Well, you know, we sent, or it was supposed to be sent out today to Senator Yeager's office, a request of, we've never heard of it. I mean, I've got a grant staff that has not heard of this, so we sent a letter to, hopefully, it went out today to Senator Yeager, and emailed his staff saying, let us know about it. Now, I, I was vaguely aware of it, come to mayor in Morgan County executive called me last week. He says, what do you know about this? I said, I, I, I don't know nothing about it. And he talked about it was a construction project of a million dollars.
It's brick and mortar for mental, for, for mental health, but.
Yeah, then I'm thinking, what's a million dollars going to get you on the mental health issue out there?
That's a million more than, than we have, and, and I think if you, if you'll call, if you'll have somebody call center for Yeager in the morning, in an hour or so, we'll get, if, if we're interested in that.
Yeah, well, we, we've sent an email out there, and I, I'm not so sure, like, you know, one thing we have to watch.
I think one of the questions you had too was the ongoing cost afterwards, what?
Yeah, but I'm going.
Yeah, there is, I don't think there is any, I think this is.
We, we don't know about it, and I guess it's a big thing, so, so we're out there looking for it, but, uh, I, I'm not so sure the state is aware of that $39 worth, $60 to $100 that could be impacting us and every other county out there.
We're still under your report, Mr. Woody.
The only other thing I wanted to say in this, I, I, you know, we've talked to the legislature a little bit about it, uh, and maybe as mentioned a little bit at the ad hoc committee the other day. The measurable progress in the million dollars was trying to get us approval to see where we go. Uh, I'm assuming that gets approved since it got approved the other night. But what we're going to have to do as a team is determine, um, you know, how we're going to progress with that once we have the authority to do it. Uh, once we have the money of a million dollars authorization, we're going to have to come together as a body, because I'm not doing this on my own, and it's not, you know, even though the appropriation there, and determine what the avenue is to address vacating that lot over there. Because I think that's what they're looking at. They're looking at, okay, you, you've talked about building for eight years now. We've seen some progress of acquiring property. At what point in time, and we're fixing to raise two of the houses over here, uh, for construction, lay down yards, parking and stuff, but the, the real big one that we're going to have to deal with is what now is the building codes. You know, do we want to look at building, uh, office complex for them? Do we want to rent a spot out for them? Do you want to move them into the courthouse? Do you want to just abolish building and codes altogether? I mean, you've got some options that we're going to have to be collectively making a decision on. And I don't know, um, you know, they talked about coming in courthouse, but I, I mean, do you save money? Well, then you have to rent out space for the, um, reappraisal team every three or four years. And then you have to deal with the tractor, tractors and trailers coming to the courthouse. And you got to deal with, you know, the contractors that you try to make the job as easy as they can, having them wait 30 lot, 30 minutes on a Tuesday morning to get a permit because it's court day, and they're not standing on the first floor, they're going to the third floor. I mean, there's advantages of bringing them here, but there's a hell of a disadvantage I don't think we want to, uh, put in. So, I say that to say, folks, there's some decisions that we're going to have to make here in the next 30 to 90 days that are measurable. Uh, so, you know, I've been calling around about empty buildings in town that has an adequate parking lot and a turnaround space for, um, vehicles. Because we've got the picture, we can show you, at any given time, a contractor comes in, and they've been down to Lowe's, or they've been to Ace Hardware, or they've been to Scanlands, and they've got stuff on their vehicle, or it's empty, and they're fixing to go there and pick it up. Um, so, Mr. Chairman, I don't know where we go on that, but it is a big decision to make, um, going forward. And my report should have been 10 or 15 minutes, but everybody wanted to ask questions.
Commissioner, Commissioner Berry, then Commissioner Moore.
Just food and thought. Do we still have, um, the lease down on the building at Midtown there for some vehicles and things? Is that about $36,000 a year or something?
It's about $21, 1,800 a month, uh.
Is that, is that something that we can, that we can, I think it comes due in June or July?
Well, and, and again.
Is that something that we can, that we can find places south of the river or someplace to vacate and use that money temporarily for a office lease?
Well, it's probably not, it's probably not acceptable for a office.
No, I'm not talking about there, I'm talking about using, using, replacing that money if we can do something temporary, just to get out of that situation.
And you need to deal with the sheriff's department, because the sheriff's department, that is one of their storage facilities.
I hate, I hate to ask this question, but could you give a very brief, for some of the new commissioners, what he's talking about?
So, so.
Very brief.
So, the county has, in the Office of Emergency Service, a lot of equipment. The sheriff has a lot of equipment. So, when the county purchased the rescue squad building, uh, south, the, the OES vacated the premises down in Midtown, which was a warehouse, and, uh, we moved all that equipment under Tim Suter down south. The, the sheriff was needing space for a lot of reasons, and, and again, is it because we didn't have enough of a lay down yard over there, whatever, but they have occupied that facility. He, he, so it was out of the OES budget, and people on the OES committee knows this, and the Sheriff's Liaison Committee probably knows this, that that, that lease agreement changed. Rome County still has it, it went from one budget to the other, but that is a sheriff's question.
It's in, it's in Midtown, right out of where Mike's barber shop, right beside the French's.
Chief, is that something we could look at and see? I think you got a boat in there and.
We got a lot of stuff in there, you know? We do have a lot of equipment, got DUIs rather, got a couple other trucks that we use whenever we get stolen property. Got, uh, some of our tactical vehicles, we got a lot of stuff there.
That's fine, I, I just, I'm just looking to see if there's someplace we can.
And, and again.
We can vacate.
And again, you know, the question is, we could build a facility for that. I mean, we've got land leased from TBA at no, I mean, and, and it was for some of that warehousing, I mean.
Well, I think at one time, we even talked about down at the landfill, right? Building, building some, some place for the sheriff to store some stuff at the landfill.
Well, they, they've got a, well, I, I want to say, they, they have a place under security down there that'd be put.
Commissioner Berry.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moore, is he up?
No, uh, it's been, it's been talked about enough.
Mr. I mean, that is, Mr. Woody.
Uh, that concludes my reports.
Moving on, we'll start back under a special words confirmation, the appointment of John Howe to the Rock County Board of Public Utilities to the resignation of Greg Palace. The term will expire June 20th, 2020. I get a motion on the board, second? Motion by Commissioner Berry, second by Commissioner Hester. Commissioner Berry.
Yes, um, John's a, John's a very fine guy. He's, he's a former airplane pilot, military pilot. Um, I think the only thing here is, we, we really haven't received, and, and he represents, he represents our district, but we've really never gotten, uh, a resignation letter.
Of any kind?
From, from the, from the current member. And I think we just need some, I, I'd like to see us put something in place where at least the commissioners know when, when somebody from their district's coming up and on a, on a, on a resignation. This time, I mean, there's no problem. He's a, he's a good guy, um, and will, will no doubt do a great job. But I, I think in the, in the, in the future, uh, if we can, if we can just have some kind of plan in place when we get a resignation, usually it's in the minutes, and this coincides with not getting their minutes, uh, and us replacing them without, uh, that any, any commissioners know anything about it. Again, if we got lucky, John's a good guy. Thank you.
Mr. Hester.
Nothing, Paul.
Any other questions or comments? If not, Madam Clerk, could you call the?
Bell?
Aye.
Berry?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Frashiers?
Yes.
East?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes.
Hickman?
Aye.
Hooks?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
Good thing, yes.
The appointment of John Howe to the Rock County Board of Public Utilities is approved. Moving to old business, Resolution 9, 1916, a resolution authorizing the issuance, sale and payment of capital outlay notes in an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $1 million. Motion by Commissioner Meadows, second by Commissioner Hooks. Commissioner Meadows.
Well, I think we've all heard of the, the need to do this and go in careful and show measurable progress to alleviate the jail issue.
Commissioner Hooks.
Nothing, Paul.
Any other commissioners on Resolution 9, 1916?
This, this is the same thing, right? This is last, last meeting. We're passing, last meeting, and we're passing it, and this is when you come, when you bring it back?
Well, funds will be appropriated, we just need to sit down.
Purpose, like you mentioned, I mean.
Yeah, we, we need to sit down and take our direction.
Any more questions or comments? We'll take a, we'll let the clerk call this, but it's got to all back in your system while she's doing this. Madam Clerk.
Bell?
No.
Berry?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Frashiers?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
No.
Hester?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Moore?
No.
White?
Yes.
And Wilson? 12 yes and 3 no.
Resolution 9, 1916 is adopted. Moving on to new business, Resolution 11, 1901, a resolution authorizing the county attorney to file a lawsuit regarding the properties as a list of attached case requests formed by late Rock County Resolution 12, 111209, and/or left Resolution 111208 regarding the 2012 international building codes and the 2012 international residential codes. Motion by Commissioner Meadows, second by Commissioner Hickman. Commissioner Meadows.
Uh, I yield to Mr. Cofer if you'd like to address any of this.
Mr. Cofer?
If anybody has any questions pertaining to any of the particular cases, I'd be glad to try and answer for you.
Any questions, Mr. Meadows?
Not for me.
Commissioner Hickman. Any other questions for, uh, Mr. Cofer on Resolution 11, 1901? Resolution 11, 1901 is adopted. Do you find on the standing?
I got it.
You're not able to load it earlier today, or?
No.
Okay.
I've been locked out this thing.
I have a motion, I'm going to take a brief recess, and we get Mr. Hendrickson and everybody on the same page. About a five-minute recess. Regarding Rock County's only resolution, and/or Resolution 1, 1403 regarding open ground visitation accumulated degree. open ground visitation accumulated debris. Debrief, I got a motion by Commissioner Hester, second by Commissioner Bowers. Commissioner Hester.
Nothing, Paul, none of the pictures, speak for yourself.
Commissioner, uh, Bowers.
Say.
Any other commissioners, questions on eleven nineteen oh two? No, we'll go ahead and vote. Resolution eleven nineteen passes by a vote of thirteen to two. Resolution eleven nineteen oh three, a resolution authorizing the county executive to execute a multi-year agreement with Comcast Business for supplying fiber internet connection to the courthouse. Motion by Commissioner Hester, second by Commissioner Meadows. Commissioner Hester.
I think we'll sit in time for the technology changes, we need to factor data links here.
Yes. It's Mr. Meadows.
It's not long overdue, but you...
Any other questions or comments on Resolution eleven nineteen oh three? Commissioner Barry.
Is that the only one that we could, that we could give?
Is Comcast the only available internet provider here, Ms. Forn?
Um, no, we have currently, um, we have currently got Comcast, um, and it's a GSA contract, and the project is, um, very good.
Is any other available, though? I don't think there is.
AT&amp;T.
AT&amp;T?
So, but thank you, Ms. Forn, it'll be a hundred megabyte a second download link, right?
Yes, I think so, is that right, Ken?
Yes, hundred, one hundred, one hundred.
Okay. Commissioner Barry.
Oh, that's good.
Any other ques, what are we now, Mr. Barry, you got on your app, see what we're at?
Can't, I don't know, they're like...
Any other questions or comments on Resolution eleven nineteen oh three? No, we'll go ahead and vote. Resolution eleven nineteen oh three is adopted. I believe Resolution eleven nineteen oh four has been asked to withdraw.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to Resolution eleven nineteen zero five. A resolution to amend the General Capital Project Fund one seventy-one TEQ by allocating the balance of a three-year TBA grant awarded to the Rome County Office of Emergency Man. Motion by Commissioner Hickman, second by Commissioner White. Commissioner Hickman.
All about three minutes, get it.
Commissioner White.
I have nothing to add.
Any other questions or comments? You're fine, go ahead.
Does it, what kind of equipment is it?
Tell me, if you decide what the equipment, what, excuse me, if you decide what the equipment was on it, all, all these grants that we approved end up going to the OES committee, but this is one of those five-year, three-year grants?
This is, this is, the grant, this grant requires the equipment we purchased to be able to be used in response to their facilities, so it can be, and I think for this grant, uh, we were purchasing level licenses, the hazmat suit.
Any other questions or comments, eleven nineteen oh five? No, we'll go ahead and vote. Resolution eleven nineteen oh five is adopted. Resolution eleven nineteen oh six, a resolution in support of efforts by the Tennessee State Legislature, Tennessee Wildlife Preserve Agency, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the Tennessee Valley Authority to control and prevent the spread of invasive Asian carp, especially silver carp, in all east Tennessee waterways, especially those located within the boundaries of Rome County, Tennessee. Motion by Commissioner Hickman, second by Commissioner White. Commissioner Hickman.
I think this is probably one of the most important issues that we're facing. I think the efforts of everyone involved in looking at that, we really need to get serious about the technical white spot.
Commissioner White.
Ico.
Commissioner Hickman.
I got a motion by Commissioner Meadows to amend.
Miss Tag.
Okay, got you.
Commissioner Barry.
Yeah, I, I put this resolution in because Asian carp is probably the most talked about, um, topic in east Tennessee right now, and for some reason, a lot of counties surrounding us aren't taking it nearly as serious as, as we are. One reason, we have more miles of shoreline than any county around us. Secondly, our Environmental Review Board has done a super, super, super job of getting on top of this. It started with the aquatic weeds, now that, now the Asian carp, and, and all this is good, it's just asking, we, Senator Alexander, if you saw in the paper, has allocated millions to helping us, but it's not near enough. Folks in Minnesota just now are, are getting on, on board with, with the right kind of stuff that we need, and, and I'm not sure if you're, if you're getting emails or not from, from the board about what's, what's actually happening. Tim Joseph has, has done a phenomenal job of, of keeping our, keeping our folks aware and, 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 uh, some cases may be doing too much, uh, because he's not taking no for an answer from anybody. But the Asian carp, one female can lay between fifty thousand and five million eggs, so once they get here, you don't eradicate it, they're, they're here, and they're here forever, and if you've seen any videos of them, you've seen they can jump ten to twelve feet, they'll get six to eight to ten pounds in, in weight, um, they've, they've actually caused concussions, all kinds of, all kinds of accidents, uh, and basically, from our tourism standpoint, it, it kills our lake. Land between the lakes is, has been destroyed. So, this, this is all this is doing, is just asking for, for help from, from the proper authorities and, and trying to, and this also will, will go to some other counties to try to get them, uh, involved as, as we are, so, appreciate your concern.
Commissioner Meadows.
I think, Commissioner Barry said it very well, but, you know, we do have more shoreline than anyone in the state, and we have more to lose, and it takes cooperation from everybody, it's our livelihood, it's our future, and it's a really large part of our economy. I mean, this could be absolutely devastating Rome County, so we have to support this in any way possible.
Commissioner Moore.
I think we need to figure it out now. Could've been skidded or something. Uh, just a left-handed comment.
On the border, I, I can't hear. I can't hear.
You know, we can get millions of dollars for weeds and fish, but we can't take human beings and put them in jail and do anything with them, and I know it ain't got a thing we're gonna do with that, we just kinda, it's, it's a wonder to me how we bend to our federal dollars when we really need help talking about human beings, so.
Since you brought that up, I think out of Paris, Tennessee, the IGA started selling Asian carp fillets, no joke?
Yeah. No, no, I, I've, I've talked to the mayor and stuff out there, and they, they've got a big market in California, but just remember, you can't, you're not, Wash Bar's posted, so if they're here...
Right now.
You're, it's posted, so you're not gonna be able, that, it's a commercial fishing business out there, but you can't commercial fish on Wash Bar.
Yeah.
Commissioner Moore.
There again, my point is very well taken, we protect the fish when we protect the human beings, so, but I don't expect anything less than that, you know? When we can pay the abortions for people, but we can't pay the places to take care of kids, so, that's just my...
I want to take it, Mr. Moore.
I'm good, thank you.
Resolution, any more questions on le, Resolution eleven nineteen oh six? Resolution eleven nineteen oh six is adopted. Just right quick, I'm Mr. Barry, I ran my internet speed, for everybody that's got internet issues at home and here, we're at point seven five for our download speed, so...
Was that wrong?
That's...
My house is at nine hundred and forty-four. Point six four. They get here next week or something like that.
Moving to Resolution eleven nineteen oh seven, a resolution in support of re-establishing invasive species committee under the Rome County Commission Oversight and Direction with the scope of this committee to address issues associated with the control and prevention and spread of invasive species within the boundaries of Rome County. Tennessee, especially those that have a direct negative impact on the economic base and environment, invasive species committee will be the central contact for all issues that follow under invasive species of Rome, with examples including but not limited invasive aquatic weeds, invasive Asian carp, and invasive plants with Rome, within Rome County. Motioned by Commissioner Barry, second by Commissioner Hendrickson. Commissioner Barry.
Yes, I, I just put this one in, again, to go with, with the other resolution, the Environmental Review Board, again, is, is, uh, this, this goes back to our old, uh, when we had the aquatic weed problem, and we, and we instituted this. Mr. Chairman, I, it really doesn't matter, I, if, if this needs to be an ad hoc, I don't, there's no, there's no problem with how it gets, or who, or who is appointed, I just thought, in, in response to the Environmental Review Board, we needed to have a committee that was working with them, because this thing, we just, we need to have somebody that's on top of this thing all the time, right?
What, what I would like to say, and I appreciate your point to the resolution, that the Environmental Review Board, like you said earlier, has done a lot of terrific work on this subject, and personally, I would feel more comfortable if we would send this directive to the Environmental Review Board and let them appoint a committee, and they can put a commissioner or two on it, but let them work within their umbrella since they got the, the expertise, and Dr. Joseph's own that ERB, so he might be a good fit for Do you have anything, brother?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with however we do it, I, I just, uh, unless, unless you wanted to have two commissioners or three or four of them, I really...
Okay, right, let me get to Mr. Hendrickson, I got a motion to amend.
No, sorry.
I got a motion to amend by Commissioner Meadows.
Chairman Ellis and Mr. Barry, I was, I was kinda thinking along the same lines, I think they'd better start their, their umbrella, because honestly, they know who to choose, who has the expertise to do that, and I would propose that we ask them to form an ad, I mean, not even ad hoc committee, a continuing committee under their umbrella, comprised of five individuals, one of which would be a commissioner if they're choosing, I mean...
Well, they could put as many, that's fine with me.
Just some sort of odd number, make recommendations to us.
So, we got a motion by Commissioner Meadows to amend this resolution directing the Environmental Review Board to form a committee that falls under this parameter, uh, and to include a commissioner on that committee, does that sound?
Yeah, that's...
Is that all right with you, Mr. Barry? You take that as a friendly amendment, Mr. Barry, Mr. Hendrickson?
So, you took how many members on the commission?
Five, did you say, or seven, whatever you...
Let's say seven, because that's...
Okay.
So, you took that as a friendly amendment, a friendly second, Mr. Meadows, do you have...
If we're gonna do seven, why don't we put two commissioners, just so they feel like we're, we got skin in the game.
That's fine. The committee, the ERB, to appoint a committee to deal with this specifically outlined in the resolution, and two commissioners to be on that seven-member body. I've got a second to that amendment? Well, I took it, hold on, we took it as a friendly amendment, that's fine. Do you have the amendment recorded, is that you did what that?
I do. Yes, sir.
So, we're ready to vote on the motion to amend the resolution. Wait, the minute clock's not popped up yet.
It is, it's up there.
It's not on our thing, though, to vote.
Well, I've got to amend.
There, motion to amend.
What about on the amendment?
Amendment to motion to amend to send it to the ERB to create the committee. Resolution eleven nineteen, uh, zero seven has been amended, amended, now we're back on Resolution eleven nineteen oh seven as amended. Mr. Barry, any more comments, or?
Bye-bye, thank you.
Mr. Hendrickson, you have the second?
None further.
Any more questions or comments on eleven nineteen oh seven as amended? Resolution eleven nineteen oh seven is adopted as amended. Resolution eleven nineteen oh eight, a resolution to opt out of the negotiation class in the national prescription opioid litigation. Motion by Commissioner Meadows, second by Commissioner Hendrickson. Commissioner Meadows?
Mr. Leppe, uh, tell us what we need to know regarding this issue.
All right, there were various federal lawsuits filed throughout the country by various governmental entities against thirteen pharmaceutical manufacturers and suppliers that made or distributed opiate-type drugs. And these lawsuits claim that these manufacturers and distributors misled the medical industry about how addictive these drugs are. And they also allege in these lawsuits that these manufacturers and distributors knew that there were a lot of improper prescriptions of opiate products, and they had a duty to inform the authorities of that, and they did not. And these lawsuits claim that because of these actions or inactions on behalf of these thirteen defendants, the local governments have had financial burdens dealing with the opiate crisis, dealing with treatment issues, uh, dealing with the impact on the criminal justice system. And back in two thousand seventeen, two hundred of these lawsuits were combined into a federal court in Ohio to administer those lawsuits. In October of this year, that federal court entered an order that made every city and every county in the United States a party to that lawsuit for the purpose of trying to negotiate a global monetary settlement with these thirteen defendants. And basically, under this order, which we are now, Rome County is now a part of this negotiation class in this lawsuit, basically, under this order, if there is a global settlement reached, for, before the court can approve it, it has to be approved by seventy-five percent of the members of this class, which means we would get a vote. And then, if the settlement is approved, the money will be allocated to the different cities and counties based upon a mathematical equation, and please don't ask me to explain it, because I don't understand it, but your percentage of any settlement is based upon the number of opiate prescriptions in your county, the number of opiate-related deaths, and the number of opiate-related addiction. Now, under this court order, if you, as a county, do not want to be part of this class and part of this global settlement, if one happens, then we have to submit some papers signed by the county executive on November twenty-two that indicates that the county has opted out. Now, the advantage of staying in this is you don't incur litigation expenses that you would incur if you went out on your own and filed your own lawsuit, and the litigation expenses in this would be pretty extraordinary, would be very high, because of the nature of expert testimony that you would have to hire in order to prove your case. But the disadvantage of staying in this is, like any other class actions... But the disadvantage of staying in this is, like any other class actions matter, you've got one vote, you're, if it settles, you're stuck with whatever is allotted to you. And at this point, you don't know what that's going to be. Of course, at this point, we really don't know if we went out on our own, what our damages would be, or what we would seek to recover. But anyway, based upon this, I prepared resolution eleven nineteen zero eight, that if adopted, it would authorize the county executive to opt out of this lawsuit. If you opted out, then you would preserve your right to file your own lawsuit, if that's what you at some point chose to do. And then, if you want to stay in this class action lawsuit, you don't have to do anything because you're automatically in it.
Commissioner Meadows.
Mr. Lepi, do you have a recommendation for us on this?
I do not, simply because I don't have any data or any information as to what we would likely be able to claim as damages if we went out on our own.
Okay.
But I can tell you that in order to prosecute this suit, if you go out on your own, you're going to have to hire medical experts, chemists.
You'd be very costly to do that.
Economists, and on top of that, that is to prove that you have damages. But you're also going to have the burden of proving that these 13 defendants knew that there was a problem that hit that, and you're not going to have any guarantee of having access to what the other plaintiffs have found. So you will have to hire some support staff, deal with all of the rooms and rooms of documents that you're going to have to get and go through.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, we'd have to hire our own legal team experts and...
You're going to have to hire expert witnesses, and you're going to have to invest some money in employees to make this suit win. Simply, this is not something that I and my one secretary can do by ourselves if you did decide to file the suit.
Commissioner Man, thank you. Commissioner Hendrickson.
Yeah.
Mr. Barry.
Yes, our county commissioner convention this last time, opioid and jails obviously were the big things. State representative came and said to us that the state of Tennessee, I guess, has worked with some other states. And what happens on this thing is, the opioid settlement won't be anywhere near the tobacco settlement was. And what the defendants are wanting is they're wanting 18 years to pay it off. So there's very little money on an annual basis coming in to anyone. They figure it was about a $75 million deal from Tennessee. So then you look at Davison and the big counties and stuff. So that's why I think the state joined with what they did. So I'm guessing that if the state thought that this was something that they could do on their own, they would have done it on their own. And like Counselor saying, I think it started in Ohio, with some counties in Ohio.
The two big suits are originated in Ohio, just based on what I've read. But the, all the federal suits were consolidated in Ohio because that was the center of the area where everyone could come to.
And I think the other thing is, most, every piece of evidence that we pick up has to be on our own, right? We can't go back and use what they've used in Ohio or somewhere. We've got to come up with our own.
Well, we don't have access to that, because there's not been a trial. And the evidence is contained in the offices of the lawyers who are prosecuting or defending those cases. There's not, the evidence is not in a court file that one can go to and pull. Now, once there is an actual trial, then there will be evidence available that becomes a matter of public record. But right now, no, there's no guarantee we would have access to what the other parties have accumulated.
And even then, it's costly, whatever you do is a very costly deal. But I thought it was interesting that they already are talking settlement buys and trying to get it out over 18 years, so it's going to be a long drawn-out thing. You're going to pay upfront for your legal fees, and you're going to get something back on an installment basis.
You're going to pay upfront for your litigation expenses, and you're going to have to hire a team of expert witnesses.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hook.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the DA's office got a grant a couple of years ago trying to compile some of this information. But I'm telling you, Rome County, the data that they will be asking for, we're no more, we're not ready, I mean, we don't have the data. It's only in the last couple of years, I think, been even looked at here in Rome County's. And to that point, we didn't have, we didn't have no data. And Tim may know better than I, but I don't think that it would be hard pressed, even if we had a team of experts, it would be hard pressed to even find the data within our county to support such a case.
Commissioner Bell.
So if we support it, if we don't vote to this, that puts us liable to have to hire X, Y, or Z to get this thing through.
No, if you adopt this resolution, then you're out of the class and you're out of that lawsuit. So if you want to seek recovery for opiate issues, you'd have to file your own lawsuit.
Then it would cost us.
Yeah, that's what.
But if we don't opt out of it, it gets filed for us for free of charge.
It gets filed for you free of charge, but you don't have, you've got one vote on whether or not you want to agree with the outcome.
Right, which happened that hurt us.
And like I say, it's just you don't have any, you really don't have any control over the outcome.
Right, but happened that hurt us, hurt us financially?
Well, like I say, I don't know, because like Commissioner Hook said, we really, to my knowledge, we don't have the data to show that, how the extent of how the opioid crisis has affected Rome County government. So if we had an idea as to what damages we might accrue, then it might be worth looking at filing a separate lawsuit. But if we don't know what we're likely to recover, then it's probably not worth filing a separate lawsuit.
For some reason, I'm not understanding.
I think clear what, I understand what Mr. Bell's asking. If we opt out of this lawsuit, we'll eventually, if we want to file something, have to do it on our own in the future.
We have to.
Right, and if we vote no on this tonight, that keeps us in the lawsuit.
That keeps us in.
We're going to get something, yes.
And it's paid for, and we could get something.
Correct.
Yeah, it's paid for, and you could get something.
Very good, thank you.
Commissioner Moore.
I'm not an attorney, but I am able to deal with the judicial system, but personally, I'd really go up against that counselor a year ago with me and get some stats that I put together, and say, we had 32 died last year of this, and probably 50,000, I don't know. I'm just thinking of numbers, rather than put up one out of thousands of counties across the, I don't know if that would make any difference for the jury or whatever. I know you see class actions all the time, so. And I don't know that it means anything, I just seem like if you decided it was, you were going to go against it, you know, other than a call. We can put a whole lot more effort in if we ever decide to do that. On the other hand, we don't have to do anything, we're just included, so. Dead set against it, I just feel like we've removed our ability to ever file a lawsuit if we go in this class action, is that correct?
You can file a lawsuit, you can still file a lawsuit, but if this class action settles before your lawsuit is resolved, then that gets rid of your lawsuit. You can't collect twice.
I'm good, I've got mixed feelings, I don't know if we'd ever get to that point, but I know we've had a lot of people die in Sharm County that might be easier to tell than that it would be if we had a thousand deaths with 100,000 people or whatever in a county like ours.
So just to clarify, before we vote on this, a yes vote would be, we'd be opting out of the negotiation class, we'd pretty much be on our own moving forward.
Right.
A no vote on this would keep us in the class action suit, where we would join up everybody else, and we wouldn't have no pocket expenses.
Right.
Does everybody understand that?
Just clarification. In, whereas, whereas if Rome County remains a member of this class action lawsuit, it will receive a share of any monies awarded to the class. However, it will be bound by the outcome of the lawsuit. Then it says opt out of the class action lawsuit. Okay, so therefore, okay, so therefore, resolved, so we need to vote yes.
What do you vote?
No, I didn't want to, I didn't want he just said.
No, if we vote yes, it knocks us out of the class.
Yeah, if you vote yes, it knocks you out of the class action.
And we vote no, we stay in the class action.
Free question.
Before we vote. So any more questions or comments? Is everybody clear on what a yes and a no vote means before we vote? Lieutenant Clerk, we'll take the vote. Right quick, we got the 13th Annual Founder's Day coming up here on the second floor, November the 26th at 6:00 p.m. And I also want to ask all the commissioners and the public to please continue remembering Brenda Hendrickson and the prayers and Junior's family, if she's still fighting her battle with cancer. Please remember them in your prayers. Commissioner Barry.
November 25th, a week from tonight, 6:15, we'll light the county Christmas tree at Rome State Campus. I want everyone embodied to be a part of that. Happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, right quick, tomorrow night, everybody, 6 o'clock at the bus garage for our joint meeting of the school board. That's tomorrow night at 6 o'clock. Motion by Commissioner Bell, second by Commissioner White to adjourn all the members of the I. Mr. Chairman.